Good chickens.
Everyone ready?
Ready.
I read his bio and then I swear I'm in. Then we'll do this. I read his bio and then I swear I'm in.
Let's do it.
Just so you know that, okay?
All set?
Recording.
Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Township Lacey Caucus meeting, November 22, 2022. Adequate notice of this meeting has been given in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act pursuant to public laws, 1975. Said notice was advertised in the Asbury Park Press and the Beacon, was posted on the bulletin board showing the time and place of the meeting. We start with a salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number one, Resolution 2022-312, promoting an officer to chief of police.
A resolution to Township Lacey, County motion, State of New Jersey, promoting Christopher Kenny provisionally to the position of chief of police pending promotional procedures for the Township of Lacey. Can I have a motion, please?
Move it.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mrs. Giuliano?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mayor Dyckoff?
Yes.
At this time, I'd like to, before I swear, Mr. Kenny into his position, I'd like to read a little bit of background and bio on him. Chris is a lifelong resident of Lacey Township. He is a graduate of the Lacey Township High School in 1992. After graduating high school, Chris made the decision to become a police officer, and he attended Ocean County College where he earned an associate's degree in criminal justice. He went on to further his education by attending Stockton State College where he earned his bachelor's degree in criminal justice. Chris made education a priority in his life and continued on with his college career. He attended Seton Hall University where he received a graduate degree and postgraduate degree. Chris earned a master's degree in human resource training and development and an ED degree in education, leadership, management, and policy. Chris began his long law enforcement career as a special officer with the Beach Haven Borough Police Department from 1996 to the year 2000. There, Chris gained valuable experience as a law enforcement officer and successfully completed the Class 1 Police Academy, a nine-month Class 2 Police Academy, and a basic full-time police officer academy. Chris joined the Lacey Township Police Department as a full-time police officer in May of 2000 and was assigned to the department's patrol division. Chris was promoted to the rank of sergeant in 2004, and as a sergeant, Chris had made many different, had many different responsibilities. He was initially assigned to the patrol division where he supervised a patrol squad consisting of seven officers. Chris was later assigned to patrol services where he was in charge of many administrative responsibilities to include payroll, communications center, the fleet, and traffic safety. Chris was promoted to lieutenant in 2014. As lieutenant, Chris was initially assigned to the patrol division as a platoon lieutenant in charge of two patrol squads. Chris was later given the responsibility of administration division commander in charge of the training bureau. Chris was responsible for all department training to include all mandatory in-service training, firearms, active shooter, simulations, and field training officer programs. As the administrative lieutenant, Chris was also in charge of professional standards in which he was responsible for reviewing and developing policies and procedures to comply with the accreditation standards of our department. Chris has also been assigned internal affairs responsibilities and has served as the deputy internal affairs coordinator for the township. Chris has had various other responsibilities and has held various positions throughout his career. Chris has been involved with the emergency management since 2007 and has been the deputy emergency management coordinator since 2013. Chris was a member of the Ocean County SWAT team from 2005 through 2013. He has been a department instructor since 2004 and has taught such topics as use of force, vehicle pursuit, firearms, cell block management, and domestic violence. Chris has also been the domestic violence liaison, certified noise officer, field training coordinator, and firearms instructor and coordinator. Chris has volunteered as a member of the department honor guard and was a founding member of the Lacey Township Municipal Police Foundation. Unfortunately, Chris's parents are both deceased, so they're not here to enjoy this moment tonight, but they are watching over us. And he wants to acknowledge the importance of the attendance of his big brother, Mike, the best brother a guy could ask for, and such a great mentor. Now, I don't know if any of that's true, Mike, but we gotta believe in him for tonight. Chris has two children that he is very proud of, his 16-year-old son Christopher and his 13-year-old daughter Jenna. And of course, Chris's biggest supporter is his girlfriend Inez, who is the love of his life.
Oh.
So I'd like to swear you in tonight, Chris.
Good job.
And who is going up here to join?
Hello, family.
Somebody would like to hold the Bible? So your left hand's gonna go on the Bible and you're gonna raise your right for me?
All right.
So all you have to do is repeat after me.
Slow, please.
Oh, come on. Three or four times by now. We should get it right.
I, Christopher Kenny.
I, Christopher Kenny.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully.
That I will faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly.
And justly.
Perform all the duties of chief of police.
Perform all the duties of chief of police.
According to the best of my abilities.
According to the best of my abilities.
And that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the state of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And to the government established in the United States.
And to the government established in the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people, so help me God.
Under the authority of the people, so help me God.
Woo! Christopher smiles. He's doing great.
That's it.
Yep.
It's all good.
Did good.
Yes.
Inez, turn.
As long as you don't stab him through the heart, we're good.
You certainly may.
The floor is yours, young man.
He's younger than us.
I want to say I'm humbled and honored to be given this opportunity to be chief of police and lead this department. I first want to thank all, everybody for coming out here. This means so much. All the officers, all the friends, family, PJ's family, friends, our retired officers, friends I went to the police academy with and started out in Beach Haven. That's where I started my long enforcement career. It means a lot, and, you know, I'm proud and truly honored. I mostly, you know, especially want to, you know, thank my family, Christopher, Jenna, my brother Michael, and Inez, you know, thank you for your support. I'm gonna be even more busy.
You can imagine.
Just a little bit.
My daughter doesn't like the attention. Jenna, I'm gonna have more phone calls than I take, and I usually get so many. I'll try to be sure when I meet her, you know, your support is what I really need.
Appreciate it.
The committee? Veronica, thank you so much. It's a true honor, and to get your trust and confidence means a lot, and I won't let you down, I promise. I'd be remiss if I didn't mention Nikki. Nikki Giuliano, one of, you know, our all-time supporters, always in our corner, and I can speak for PJ myself and all these, you know, ladies and gentlemen here, we're never gonna forget him.
I know. I'm so thankful.
We'll always remember.
Thank you, Chris.
I want to say to all my coworkers, officers, I'm so looking forward, I'm excited to move forward with our department, with our organization, moving forward to the future, and I consider you all my second family. Not just the officers, which, I'm so proud of all of you, and although I don't sign enough, and I should, I don't sign enough, I wouldn't take over this department if I didn't know what type of officers you are. And I'm proud of you, and I'm so glad that you're part of Lacey Police Department, and I know moving forward, we're gonna make this organization phenomenal, great. I'm super excited. All the support services, you know, all our dispatchers, communication, the unsung heroes, our records personnel, Allison, Lisa, our clerk, Brian Wedgus, all these people that work for us, they do the stuff that nobody sees on a daily basis, but they're the lifeblood of the organization. Appreciate you so much, and without you, our agency wouldn't be as successful as it is. Everybody always praises their officer, but you don't get enough praise, and I know the phone calls you take, the nights that were ordered in and you're ordered in, you appreciate, you know, it's understood, it's acknowledged and appreciated. So, I make this vow to the community. I've always been dedicated to this community, and I always will be dedicated to this community and all of the residents of Lacey Township. PJ, there's nobody better that I want by my side as my right-hand man than you, and this means a lot to me. And your father, he's awesome. I'm so proud to have him, and I want to be able to turn the agency over to your hands in the future. All you guys of the future. And Wyman, thank you so much.
Thanks.
I know the committee is chomping at the bit to tell Chris how they feel about him, so Deputy Mayor McDonald.
Thank you. As you can see, there's a change in our leadership in the police department. See, the former chief has decided to retire, and we wish you the best of luck in retirement. Chris, you got some, you got some big shoes to fill. Go back in the history of all our chiefs, they all did a great job, and we expect nothing less of you. And as always said, keep this town safe. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Mr. Curatolo.
Thank you, Mayor. When you see our chief here tonight, you see the real value of education. I mean, he's police officers, it's a nuanced job, it's not just enforcement anymore. You look at the news, it's education, prevention, taking down folks in domestic disputes, de-escalation, working in our schools, taking care of our seniors. The thing I like most about this police department is how they build their bench, and you just heard our chief say that. You build your replacement, and you prepare for the future that way, and I don't think anyone does it better than this department. And I know I speak for the committee, we just absolutely love our blue in this town. It's an easy group to support, so you know that we have your back moving forward. I appreciate what you do, other than law enforcement, and building that bench and growing that, those strong roots in our community, that's really important. So God bless you, and I hope God walks with you at each and every step for the rest of your life. Thanks for your service to our town.
Thank you. Mr. Kennis.
Chris, I wasn't expecting that.
I know you weren't. Well, I did it, wanted to see if you paid attention. Thank you.
Barely, but, no. Now, Chris, really, you're the best man for the job. We're really happy to have you as our new chief. You bring a great deal of experience and knowledge to the township. You've been here a long time, and we're really happy to have you, so I really wish you the best of luck.
Thank you. I'll let you go last for a reason, thank you. Go ahead.
I'm gonna try really hard.
I know you are.
We are the lucky ones, and we're so thankful for all of you. I say this every time I see all of you in here, it's such a proud moment as a town to see what we have here protecting us, taking care of us, but on a personal note, if it wasn't for each and every one of you this year, I wouldn't have gotten through this year. So I'm so thankful for all the blue in this room, and especially, just so you know, for our chief that's going out, but he's put it in good hands with the chief that's here, and we're very fortunate to have you as our chief, and I'm thankful for you, and congratulations, and to your family, congratulations too. That's all.
So I might look at, but I've been here for five chiefs. You might not look at.
Me too.
You too. And each chief brought something different to the table, and each chief was good for that time, and I truly believe after sitting with you and of course, your right-hand man and all, all of you, that our town is in very, very, very good hands, and I thank you for all your service, and you, I've known you for a long time, and who would have thought, one day, while we were working out at Ultimate Fitness, that you'd be the chief and I'd be the mayor? Can you imagine? Pretty interesting, strange things happen, so guys, all of you, thank you so much. Chief, congratulations from the bottom of my heart. Item number two, Resolution 2022-313, promoting an officer to police captain.
Resolution to Township Lacey, County motion, State of New Jersey, promoting PJ Sullivan Jr. provisionally to the position of captain pending promotional procedures for the Township of Lacey. Can I have a motion, please?
Move it.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mrs. Giuliano?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mayor Dyckoff?
Yes.
I'm gonna read a bio related, for Mr. Sullivan. Captain Sullivan was born and raised in Lacey Township and graduated from the Lacey Township High School in 1998. He is a third-generation police officer. His father retired from our police department. His father was badge number 39. PJ is badge 77. I think we're up to badge 126 now, or something like that?
Oh, wow.
125, okay, so there's been a lot of people coming through our doors there, and his grandfather was also a police officer at the New York City Police Department. After high school, Captain Sullivan attained a bachelor's of arts degree from Seton Hall University. He continued his education at Fairleigh Dickinson University, receiving a master's degree in public administration. Captain Sullivan was hired as a police officer with the Lacey Township Police Department in August of 2001. He attended class number 77 of the Ocean County Police Academy and achieved a high firearms award for his academy class. He spent the first 12 years of his career in the patrol division. During his time in patrol, Captain Sullivan served as a member of the Ocean County Regional SWAT team. Throughout his career, he has been heavily involved in the firearms training within the agency and holds various instructor certifications related to firearms. Captain Sullivan is certified in methods of construction, certified as a field training officer, and was an EMT for 18 years. Captain Sullivan was promoted to the position of police sergeant in March of 2014 and then police lieutenant in July of 2016. His tenure as a police lieutenant, he served in both the patrol and administrative divisions of our agency. Captain Sullivan's proudest achievement in his life is his family. He is married to his wife, Dr. Lauren Sullivan. Together, they have three boys, Cooper, Cole, and Christian, and they spend a lot of time watching their boys play baseball throughout the country. Additionally, he would like to recognize his lifelong support system of his family and his friends, most of them are here in this room tonight with us. Captain Sullivan acknowledges he would not have survived a career in law enforcement without the support of each and every one of you. So I would like to call you up to swear your name.
Or the hat.
I, Paul J. Sullivan Jr.
I, Paul J. Sullivan Jr.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully.
That I will faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly.
And justly.
Perform all the duties of police captain.
Perform all the duties of police captain.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
And that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the state of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And to the government established in the United States.
And to the government established in the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people, so help me God.
Under the authority of the people, so help me God.
Congratulations.
Oh, here's your chance, here's your chance. Well, you're a doctor, so, I mean, I don't know if I'd knock you out.
Oh, that's a nice, long needle there, too.
Doesn't have his vest on either, so.
I made five. It's a little tight.
A witcher.
Turn around, take another shot, you guys.
I love her.
Me too, me too. So you have no words?
My man said it all.
Come on, you can say it to me.
Congratulations.
Let me say it to you.
Congratulations.
Yes, we want you to say something.
Thank you, buddy.
So I actually had nothing prepared. Chris said it all, so I'm completely humble experience.
So you're speechless? It's all good.
It's all good.
PJ, it's all good.
I look at all these guys out here, and I just, I love them so much, everybody knows that, so I'm happy to be up here to represent as well as I can. Everybody here represent my family and work side by side, so, thank you.
Deputy Mayor McDonald.
Thank you, Mayor. As I said earlier when we promoted Chris to the chief, and we have a change in the leadership here, and what we've done here tonight, making PJ the captain, he will be the next police chief when Chris decides to call it career. So there's a succession plan in place, and that's a very good thing. PJ, you earned it. Earned it, and I want to congratulate you.
Thanks.
And as you said, and we talked about it, you guys are the chief.
I know.
And we hope that this team ever, no, I don't hope, I know it's gonna work.
You're like a bully.
It's absolutely gonna work.
Strict bully.
I think the men in our police officers are gonna thrive under your leadership as the captain, and I think, and I've said this before, I think we have the best police force in the state of New Jersey, and how you're gonna make it better, I can't wait to see. But it will be better, and as I've always said, please give us a hug. Mayor?
Thank you. Mr. Curatolo.
Thank you, Mayor. So both promoted parties tonight from Seton Hall Graduate School, just saying. He's a Seton Hall graduate. Can't help it, shameless plug. Like our deputy mayor said, PJ, you definitely earned it, you're beloved in this town, see how the men respect both of you guys, and what struck me was, after doing interviews for so many years, and I want the people to know this because it was truth, when we were interviewing these two men individually, it was a competition. They couldn't stop saying good things about each other, and when I saw that brotherhood, and I knew it was genuine, because you can tell, you can't fake that, you can't fake that funk. These guys, they have love for each other, they respect each other, they've grown in this department with each other, and I've seen PJ and our chief, and so many other folks on a stage at the high school talking about prevention, helping these kids, so for me, it's real. Again, I say publicly, and what I say privately, I love you guys, every one of yous, and I'm just really looking forward to working with you and really just working for you, because, I mean, you protected my family down the street too, so thank you and God bless you. I love you, God bless you. Thanks.
Mr. Kennis.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, great job, PJ, really happy to have you as captain. When we did, we haven't had a captain in a while, and when both PJ and Chris came in, they came in as a team, so, and they kind of knew what they wanted to do right from the beginning, and it was, so it was kind of easy for us to make a decision to go with both the chief and a captain, just because they were so, you know, on the same page and just, you know, sort of one unit, so I'm really looking forward to working with both of you, so, congratulations.
Mrs. Giuliano.
Yes, well, see, I've known Mr. PJ a long time, you know, when he used to be on the baseball fields, you know, down in Little League and stuff like that, so it's a proud moment, and your dad would just be beaming, beaming at this point, you know, so proud of you, and we are all so proud, and it's just a delight to see the families here and all your friends, and what an honor to be now the captain of our force, so you take that and you enjoy every moment along with the chief, enjoy every moment of this because it's a real honor, and thank you, thank you for giving your time to this town, thank you.
So along lines with what Mrs. Giuliano said and what the other committee person said, the best part of when we hire a police officer, promote a police officer, is looking at the faces of the families. I look at your families, I look at the pride that they have in you, and really means a lot. It was also touched on, this is a little different, I said I've been here for five chiefs that I promoted, this is my fourth one, and while chiefs had come before and given us their vision of what the police department could or should be, these two, it was different because the two of them came in lockstep and they presented a vision that it's what is needed, and I said before, each chief we've had was a chief for that time, and this is what we need at this point in time. I'm so happy to have the two of you and all of your command staff and all your officers and support staff here protecting the people of Lacey Township, and Mr. Curatolo said, we're gonna work for you as well, so thank you very much, best of luck.
Thank you.
Excuse me, can I get a picture of the two of them in front of you?
Of course.
Cause whole Christ.
I think that was the first time I've seen that, yes.
It was a full-on cry.
There's blackmail. There's a little blackmail in that one.
Anybody else want a shot?
Yeah, really, I was really, you know, such a relic. And now for my next trip, trick, watch me clear this room out. Unless you want to stay for our township agenda, we're gonna take a short recess and you can all leave.
I'm gonna pause the tape.
Are you back on?
Yep, he's back on.
Recording, back on.
Good evening, welcome to Township Lacey Township meeting, November 22, 2022. Adequate notice of this meeting has been given in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act pursuant to public laws, 1975. Said notice was advertised in the Asbury Park Press and the Beacon, it was posted on the bulletin board showing the time and place of the meeting. Item number one, first reading of ordinance, 2022-41.
Can we salute the flag?
Oh, I'm sorry.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As you can see, there's a change in our leadership in the police department. The former chief has decided to retire. We wish you the best of luck in retirement. Chris, you've got some, you've got some big shoes to fill. Go back in the history of all our chiefs, they all did a great job. We expect nothing less of you. And as always said, keep this town safe. Mayor, that's all I have.
Thank you. Mr. Curatolo.
Thank you, Mayor. When you see our chief here tonight, you see the real value of education. I mean, as police officers, it's a nuanced job. It's not just enforcement anymore. You look at the news, it's education, prevention, taking down folks in domestic disputes, de-escalation, working in our schools, taking care of our seniors. The thing I like most about this police department is how they build their bench. And you just heard our chief say that. You build your replacement, and you prepare for the future that way. And I don't think anyone does it better than this department. And I know I speak for the committee, we just absolutely love our blue in this town. It's an easy group to support. So you know that we have your back moving forward. I appreciate what you do, other than law enforcement, and building that bench and growing that, those strong roots in our community. That's really important. So God bless you, and I hope God walks with you at each and every step for the rest of your life. Thanks for your service to our town.
Thank you.
Chris, I wasn't expecting that.
I know you weren't. That's why I did it, wanted to see if you were paying attention.
Barely, but, um... Now, Chris, really, you're the best man for the job. We're really happy to have you as our new chief. You bring a great deal of experience and knowledge to the township. You've been here a long time, and we're really happy to have you. So I really wish you the best of luck.
I'll let you go last for a reason, thank you. Go ahead.
I'm gonna try really hard.
I know you are.
We are the lucky ones, and we're so thankful for all of you. I say this every time I see all of you in here. It's such a proud moment as a town, to see what we have here protecting us, taking care of us. But on a personal note, if it wasn't for each and every one of you this year, I wouldn't have gotten through this year. So I'm so thankful for all the blue in this room, and especially, just so you know, for our chief that's going out. But he's put it in good hands with the chief that's here. And we're very fortunate to have you as our chief. And I'm thankful for you. And congratulations, and to your family, congratulations too.
So I might look at, but I've been here for five chiefs.
Me too.
And you too. And each chief brought something different to the table. And each chief was good for that time. And I truly believe after sitting with you and, of course, your right-hand man, and all, all of you, that our town is in very, very, very good hands. And I thank you for all your service. And you know, I've known you for a long time. And who would've thought, one day, while we were working out at Ultimate Fitness, that you'd be the chief and I'd be the mayor? Can you imagine? Pretty interesting. Strange things happen. So, guys, all of you, thank you so much. Chief, congratulations from the bottom of my heart. Item number two, Resolution 2022-313, promoting an officer to police captain.
Resolution Township Lacey County, Vol. 10 State of New Jersey, promoting PJ Sullivan Jr. provisionally to the position of captain pending promotional procedures for the Township of Lacey. Can I have a motion, please?
Move it.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mrs. Giuliano?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Kennas?
Yes.
Mayor Dyckoff?
Yes.
I'm gonna read a bio related, uh, for Mr. Sullivan. Captain Sullivan was born and raised in Lacey Township and graduated from the Lacey Township High School in 1998. He is a third-generation police officer. His father retired from our police department. His father was badge number 39. PJ is badge 77. I think we're up to badge 126 now, or something like that?
125.
125, okay. So there's been a lot of people coming through our doors there. And his grandfather was also a police officer at the New York City Police Department. After high school, Captain Sullivan attained a Bachelor's of Arts degree from Seton Hall University. He continued his education at Fairleigh Dickinson University, receiving a master's degree in public administration. Captain Sullivan was hired as a police officer with the Lacey Township Police Department in August of 2001. He attended class number 77 of the Ocean County Police Academy and achieved a High Firearms Award for his academy class. He spent the first 12 years of his career in the patrol division. During his time in patrol, Captain Sullivan served as a member of the Ocean County Regional SWAT team. Throughout his career, he has been heavily involved in the firearms training within the agency, and holds various instructor certifications related to firearms. Captain Sullivan is certified in methods of construction, certified as a field training officer, and was an EMT for 18 years. Captain Sullivan was promoted to the position of police sergeant in March of 2014, and then police lieutenant in July of 2016. His tenure as a police lieutenant, he served in both the patrol and administrative divisions of our agency. Captain Sullivan's proudest achievement in his life is his family. He is married to his wife, Dr. Lauren Sullivan. Together, they have three boys, Cooper, Cole, and Christian. And they spend a lot of time watching their boys play baseball throughout the country. Additionally, he would like to recognize his lifelong support system of his family and his friends. Most of them are here in this room tonight with us. Captain Sullivan acknowledges he would not have survived a career in law enforcement without the support of each and every one of you. So I would like to call you up to swear your name. I, Paul J. Sullivan Jr.
Aye, Paul J. Sullivan Jr.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully.
That I will faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly.
And justly.
Perform all the duties of police captain.
Perform all the duties of police captain.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
And that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And to the government established in the United States.
And to the government established in the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people, so help me God.
Under the authority of the people, so help me God.
Congratulations.
Well, you're a doctor, so, I mean, I don't know if I'd knock you out.
Oh, that's a nice, long needle there, too.
Doesn't have his vest on either, so...
I made five.
A witcher.
So, Ron, take another shot again.
I love her.
Me too, me too.
So you have no words?
I have no words. My man said it all.
Come on, you can say it to me.
Congratulations.
Let me say it to you, thanks.
Congratulations.
Yes, we want you to say something.
Thank you, buddy.
So I actually have nothing prepared. Chris said it all. So, I'm completely humble in experience.
So you're speechless. It's all good.
It's all good.
PJ, it's all good.
I look at all these guys out here, and I just, I love them so much. Everybody knows that. So, I'm happy to be up here to represent as well as I can everybody here, represent my family, and we're excited for some. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. As I said earlier, when we promoted Chris, the chief, and we have a change in the leadership here, and what we've done here tonight, making PJ the captain, he will be the next police chief when Chris decides to part career. So there's a succession plan in place, and that's a very good thing. PJ, you earned it. Earned it, and I want to congratulate you. And as you said, and we talked about it, you guys are a team.
Right.
And we hope that this team ever... No, I don't hope. I know it's gonna work.
You're like a bully.
It's absolutely gonna work.
Strict bully.
I think the men in our police officers are gonna thrive under your leadership as the captain. And I think, and I've said this before, I think we have the best police force in the state of New Jersey. And how you're gonna make it better, I can't wait to see. But it will be better. And as I've always said, please keep us safe. Mayor?
Thank you. Mr. Curatolo.
Thank you, Mayor. So, both promoted parties tonight from Seton Hall Graduate School. Just saying. He's a Seton Hall graduate. Can't help it. Shameless plug. Like our deputy mayor said, PJ, you definitely earned it. You'll be loved in this town. You see how the men respect both of you guys. And what struck me was, after doing interviews for so many years, and I want the people to know this, because it was truth, when we were interviewing these two men individually, it was a competition. They couldn't stop saying good things about each other. And when I saw that brotherhood, and I knew it was genuine, because you can tell. You can't fake that. You can't fake that funk. These guys, they have love for each other, they respect each other, they've grown in this department with each other. And I've seen PJ and our chief, and so many other folks on a stage at the high school, talking about prevention, helping these kids. So, for me, it's real. Again, I say publicly than what I say privately, I love you guys, every one of you. And I'm just really looking forward to working with you, and really, just working for you. Because, I mean, you protected my family down the street, too. So thank you, and God bless you. I love you. God bless you. Thanks.
Mr. Kennas.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, great job, PJ. Really happy to have you as captain. When we did, we haven't had a captain in a while, and when, when both PJ and Chris came in, they came in as a team. So, and they kind of knew what they wanted to do right from the beginning. And it was, so it was kind of easy for us to make a decision to go with a, both a chief and a captain, just because they were so, you know, on the same page, and just, you know, sort of one unit. So I'm really looking forward to working with both of you. Congratulations.
Yes. Well, see, I've known Mr. PJ a long time, you know, when he used to be on the baseball fields, you know, down in the Little League and stuff like that. So, it's a proud moment, and your dad would just be beaming, beaming at this point, you know? So proud of you. And we are all so proud. And it's just a delight to see the families here and all your friends, and what an honor to be now the captain of our force. So, you take that, and you enjoy every moment, along with the chief. Enjoy every moment of this, because it's a real honor. And thank you. Thank you for giving your time to this town. Thank you.
So, along lines with what Mrs. Giuliano said, and what the other committee person said, the best part of when we hire a police officer, promote a police officer, is looking at the faces of the families. I look at your families, and I look at the pride that they have in you, and really means a lot. It was also touched on, this is a little different. I said I've been here for five chiefs that I promoted. This is my fourth one. And while chiefs had come before and given us their, their vision of what the police department could or should be, these two, it was different, because the two of them came in lockstep, and they presented a vision that it's what is needed. And I said before, each chief we've had was a chief for that time, and this is what we need at this point in time. I'm so happy to have the two of you, and all of your command staff, and all your officers, and support staff here, protecting the people of Lacey Township. And Mr. Curatolo said, we're gonna work for you as well. So thank you very much. Best of luck.
Thank you.
Can I get a picture of the two of them in front of you?
Of course.
Stars won't cry this time.
I think that was the first time I've seen that, yes.
It wasn't full-on crying.
There's blackmail. There's a little blackmail in that one.
Anybody else want a shot?
Yeah, really. I was really, you know, super relatable.
Thank you.
I love it.
That's a pretty job, guys. And now for my next trip, trick, watch me clear this room out. Unless you want to stay for our township agenda, we're gonna take a short recess, and you can all leave.
I'm gonna pause the tape.
You back on?
Yep, he's back on.
Recording, back on.
Good evening. Welcome to Township Lacey Township Meeting, November 22, 2022. Adequate notices meeting has been given in accordance with the Oakland Public Meetings Act pursuant to Public Falls, 1975. Said notice was advertised in the Asbury Park Press and the Beacon. It was posted on the bulletin board, showing the time and place of the meeting. Item number one, first reading of ordinance 2022-41.
Can we salute the flag?
Oh, I'm sorry.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I apologize. We'll get back on track. I got nervous.
Got nervous.
First reading of ordinance 2022-41, setting the salaries for the non-bargaining employees.
In order to the Township Lacey County, Vol. 10 State of New Jersey, amending an ordinance entitled, in order to the Township Lacey County, Vol. 10 State of New Jersey, affixing and determining the salaries, wages, and compensation of the officers, employees, and members of the governing body of the township. These are the non-unionized employees, such as your department heads and your deputy department heads. This is for the year 2023. A 3% increase was given in line with what the union contracts had previously settled for. Motion?
Move it. Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mrs. Giuliano?
Yes.
Mr. Kennas?
Yes.
Mayor Dyckoff?
Yes. Item number two, first reading of ordinance 2022-42, setting the salaries for police dispatchers.
In order to the Township Lacey County, Vol. 10 State of New Jersey, amending an ordinance entitled, in order to the Township Lacey County, Vol. 10 State of New Jersey, affixing and determining the salaries, wages, and compensation of the officers, employees, and members of the governing body of the township. This is for the Police Dispatchers Union. This is a contract settlement. It dates back to 2019 through 2024.
Move it. Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mrs. Giuliano?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Kennas?
Yes.
Mayor Dyckoff?
Yes. Resolution 22, uh, yes, 314, appointing the chief of police as emergency management coordinator.
Resolution Township Lacey County, Vol. 10 State of New Jersey, appointing Christopher Kenny as emergency management coordinator for the Township of Lacey to fill the unexpired term of Mike Dabella.
Move it. Second.
Mrs. Giuliano?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Kennas?
Yes.
Mayor Dyckoff?
Yes. Item number four, Resolution 2022-315, appointing the police captain as deputy emergency management coordinator.
Resolution Township Lacey County, Vol. 10 State of New Jersey, appointing Captain Paul J. Sullivan Jr. as deputy emergency management coordinator for the Township of Lacey.
Move it.
Mrs. Giuliano?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Kennas?
Yes.
Mayor Dyckoff?
Yes. Item number five, Resolution 2022-316, authorizing the tax collector to conduct an electronic tax sale.
Resolution Township Lacey County, Vol. 10 State of New Jersey, authorizing the tax collector to hold an electronic tax sale.
Move it. Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mrs. Giuliano?
Yes.
Mr. Kennas?
Yes.
Mayor Dyckoff?
Yes. Item number six, Resolution 2022-317, authorizing the release of a performance bond upon the posting of a maintenance bond.
Resolution Township Lacey County, Vol. 10 State of New Jersey, authorizing the release of a performance bond for Harbor Run Phase 2 project. There is a maintenance bond in the amount of $45,396 that needs to be posted.
Move it. Second.
Mrs. Giuliano?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Kennas?
Abstain.
Mayor Dyckoff?
Yes. Item number seven, Resolution 2022-318, authorizing the release of a maintenance bond.
Resolution Township Lacey County, Vol. 10 State of New Jersey, authorizing the release of a maintenance bond for the White Oaks at Lacey Grove Street portion, block 1757 through lo, block 1764, various lots.
Move it. Second.
Mrs. Giuliano?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Kennas?
Abstain.
And Mayor Dyckoff?
Yes. Item number eight, Resolution 2022-319, authorizing the tax collector to refund a tax overpayment.
Resolution Township Lacey County, Vol. 10 State of New Jersey, authorizing the tax collector to refund a tax overpayment on block 452, lot 3, in the amount of $1,435. Motion?
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mrs. Giuliano?
Yes.
Mr. Kennas?
Yes.
Mayor Dyckoff?
Yes. Item number nine, Resolution 2022-320, authorizing the transfer of funds.
Resolution Township Lacey County, Vol. 10 State of New Jersey, authorizing a transfer of appropriations in accordance with the provisions of NJSA 48,4-4-58. We are transferring various amounts in the amount of $132 from various accounts to various other accounts to make sure that those items are whole. One of the problems that we see this year was the expensive gasoline, where due to the prices and our CPI adjustment, that we had a shortfall.
Move it. Second.
Mrs. Giuliano?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Kennas?
Yes.
And Mayor Dyckoff?
Yes. Item number 10, Resolution 2022-321, authorizing the refund of deposit monies.
Resolution Township Lacey County, Vol. 10 State of New Jersey, authorizing the refund of deposits held for the use of municipal facilities.
Move it. Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mrs. Giuliano?
Yes.
Mr. Kennas?
Yes.
Mayor Dyckoff?
Yes. Item number 11, Resolution 2022-322, authorizing the payment of township bills.
Resolution Township Lacey County, Vol. 10 State of New Jersey, authorizing the payment of township bills in the amount of $851,022.25.
Move it. Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes, I'm on stand B0400.
Mrs. Giuliano?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Kennas?
Yes.
Mayor Dyckoff?
Yes. Item number 11, motion to approve township meeting minutes of November 10, 2022.
Move it. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Item number 13, motion to approve caucus meeting minutes of November 10, 2022.
Move it. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Mrs. Giuliano needs to abstain. She was off on vacation during those two times.
In Key West, we don't.
Yes, I do have one add-on this evening. It's a Resolution 324. It's a Resolution Township Lacey County, Vol. 10 State of New Jersey, providing for the insertion of a special item of revenue and appropriation in the 2022 municipal budget, known as the Chapter 159 of the Township of Lacey pursuant to NJSA 48,4-87. We just received a grant of the drive-sover or get-pulled-over-year-end-holiday crackdown in the amount of $8,750. This was not anticipated during budget time, because we were not aware whether or not we were receiving it. So in order for us to utilize it in this year's budget, we need to place it into the budget. Can I have a motion?
Second.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mrs. Giuliano?
Yes.
Mr. Kennas?
Yes.
Mayor Dyckoff?
Yes. And that's it?
That is all I have.
Deputy Mayor McDonald, do you have any comments to be shared?
Thank you, Mayor. Real quick, I just want to wish Chris and PJ nothing but the best of luck as they beat this police force. And the other thing I have is, everybody have a safe and happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you. Mr. Curatolo.
Yes, Mayor, thank you. I just want to recognize Administrator Larray. A lot of the work she does is, you know, it goes unnoticed by some of the town folk, and she's still back home. What we do here, we can't do it without her. And we know we're all appreciative of that. Thank you to the police officers. Best of luck to our new promotions, and happy Thanksgiving. Be grateful to your family. Thank you.
Back to our normal order. Mrs. Giuliano?
Yes. Honestly, it's just so proud moment tonight, moving forward with our new regime in the police force. And congratulations to them again, and their family. And again, have a wonderful Thanksgiving, and appreciate what you have. Thank you, Mayor.
And Mr. Kennas.
Just want to wish everybody a safe and happy Thanksgiving.
Go ahead. And I will have, just, I know you all forgot, because it seems like a lifetime ago, but we did have a veterans ceremony on Veterans Day, and it was attended by members of the township committee. It was well-attended, even given the inclement weather, the weather held out, but we did get a little wet. So, I normally don't speak a lot, but I, you know, speak long. But one thing that came to mind, and I think it bears repeating, as I was speaking to the, to the crowd, you know, when we have a holiday, Memorial Day, Veterans Day, you know, you don't know whether to say merry, or happy, or good, or things like that. So, something came to mind as I was looking at, at the veterans, and as you meet veterans on a day-to-day basis, and the pride they take in being a veteran. So I think from now on, I'm gonna say, have a happy, have a prideful Veterans Day, because that's what it is. And with that?
Nope. Can we do one more thing? Because we don't realize this, but December 4th is our Christmas break, and we don't have another meeting till December 8th. So, 3:00 it starts.
3:00.
And it heads west from the Methodist Church.
Okay.
Fourth.
Fourth.
Did I say the fourth? Yeah. It should be Sunday, the 4th.
At 3:00.
3:00.
Happy Thanksgiving. Have a happy and healthy Thanksgiving to everybody. And with that, I'll open the floor to public comment. Mr. Branson, the forensic board, name and address, please.
I may remember the name, but the address. Hill Branson 4113, Amber Miss Way. Just good wishes to the committee members, to council, to the administrator, and Amy. From all of us at Seabreeze, about 1,100 people, 560 homes. Thank you for all the good work you do on behalf of the Township of Lacey and for our community also. Happy Thanksgiving.
It's amazing. I remember when that was in the planning stage, and we said 560, 562, isn't it?
568.
Five, okay. And I said, wow, you know, it's, it's, just couldn't fathom, and here we are. Seems like yesterday, but it wasn't. Anyone else?
Seeing none, motion.
This gentleman's walking up.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
Okay, name and address, please.
I just want to say, this is my first meeting.
Okay. Name and address, please.
Okay. John Saladino, 4 Farnham Court, in Seabreeze.
Okay.
Moved here 18 months ago, to new home there.
Welcome.
I have to say that, good night to Seton Hall University.
Oh, you know.
And Seton Hall is a big reason why I relocated here.
Okay.
Okay. Having been on Long Island many, many years, my middle daughter of three attended Seton Hall University, never came back home to Long Island.
Here we go.
Second daughter decided to move to New Jersey as well. Third daughter's been in Florida a long time ago, so here we are.
I did not.
It's time for us to come to New Jersey.
Yes, you did. I don't know. I never met that gentleman.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Welcome. Happy Thanksgiving.
Happy Thanksgiving.
The street guard is moving to another state.
Anyone else?
Go ahead, sir. Come on.
Name and address, please.
William Simmons, 402 Woodlawn Avenue. My question is to the, in development that's being put in the townhouses across the street from Applebee's.
Yes.
Going in the woods across the street. We bought that house because my wife was involved in a car accident. She suffered a concussion and has been dealing with pain because of that. We're gonna have to move now, because that's happening. Do we have, do we know when they're going to start construction?
You know, I'm sure as soon as possible. But basically, they, they've received their CAPR permit, their DOT permit. You know, there are, you know, a bunch of hoops that they need to jump through still, I'm sure. We had asked them to resubmit their DOT to eliminate the left turnout, to just try and alleviate...